With my gavel here, I will call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise for invocation. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to our Texas flags. And if Commissioner Modas would lead us in invocation, I would greatly appreciate it.
God of your grace and your mercy, we pray for today that you will guide us through our meeting to serve the will of the community and to be representatives that they have asked us to be. We pray for guidance for us and for our community. We pray for repair and health as we continue to recover from COVID. We pray for those who have lost lives recently. We pray, God, that you will guide us and our country to serve your will in your name. Amen.
Thank you. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would ask Commissioner Gonzalez can lead us in the pledge. And I'm going to, I know I'm on a delay, so I'll try not to mess you up by whispering. Thank you so much. If everybody would be seated, I would like to, for the clerks' record books, remark that the date is May 25, 2021. And we are, all commissioners are present. I am anticipating virtually through our Zoom access. But all commissioners are at the Nuasis County Commissioners' Court at 901 Levert, which is situated at the Nuasis County Courthouse on the third floor. The time is 1:33 PM. And of course, given that everybody is present, I do certify that a quorum has been made. At this time, I'll ask, it looks like, is Rebecca? Yes? Hi Rebecca, welcome.
Yes ma'am.
We'll have Rebecca give us a safety briefing so that everybody knows what to do in case of an emergency. And Rebecca, you may proceed.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, and attendees. Our safety briefing for today, May 25, is being held in the Nuasis County Commissioners' courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third floor atrium past the Human Resources Office. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be conning. Participants CPR certified in attendance will be dale. And remember, anyone can render aid. In the event of evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs, proceeding out the doors located on the La Pan Street side of the courthouse and assemble in the parking lot across the street. And it is important to stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom double doors will be secured and remain secure until given further notice from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. And our guest sanitizer for the day will be Michael. Our safety topic for the month of May is summer safety. People most at risk for heat exhaustion and heat stroke. Infants and young children, especially when left in cars. People 65 and older, people who are ill and have chronic health conditions or are on certain medications. Remember, keep each other safe, stay hydrated, take time to rest and cool down. And this concludes our risk management safety briefing for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. At this time, I'm going to call for public comment. I'm going to ask that Tyner is in the courtroom and that he ask our deputy to assist. There's sometimes people that wait out in the hallway. There's also people sometimes that are online. So if you would just announce for us, Tyner, since I don't have the chart in front of me, who is listed first and call them.
I sure will, Judge.
And take the podium at this time.
Okay, Judge. We have three that have signed up on the sign-in sheet. And the first this afternoon is Susie Saldana.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Saldana. And you can take the podium. And if you would, just for the clerk's record, I know they've just said your name, but if you would repeat it and also your address, they take that down for the minutes.
My name is Susie Luna Saldana and my address is 4710 Hackel, Corpus Christi, Texas, 78415.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And anytime, you may begin.
Okay, I'm here today on behalf of my brother-in-law, who is a veteran, and family that we have at Veteran Cemetery. I know that you are considering taking over the Veteran Cemetery. I'm here to strongly urge you to do so. Right now, it's being run by Austin. And we feel very strongly that it should be here in Corpus Christi. We have a lot of veterans. We have a lot of people that have given their lives for our country. And the least that this Commissioners' Court could do is honoring them by being able to be the ones that take care of it. I really would appreciate that you all vote, but I'm not just asking for your vote. I'm really asking for unanimous vote on everyone because this pertains to our veterans and their last resting place and the honor we pay them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tyner, would you announce the second individual who has signed up for public comment?
Yes, Judge. The next signature on the page is Ruben Bonilla, 2727 Morgan Avenue.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Bonilla. You may proceed.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My comments are abbreviated. I first wanted to thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you. I hope and trust all is well. I am honored to join my brothers in the American GI Forum and other assembled veterans as they express their support for the contractual arrangement that is proposed between GLO and Nuasis County. Just last week, President Biden bestowed the highly prestigious and highest honor in America, the Medal of Honor, to Colonel Ralph Puckett, who served in Korea and who, as a First Lieutenant, fresh out of West Point, fought off six different battalions of Chinese. It was China's first entrance into the Korean War. And he was almost mortally wounded, but he refused to leave his station and ultimately was pulled to safety by his men. In bestowing the Medal of Honor almost 70 years after the event, it was odd and ironic that President Moon of South Korea was present. It's the first time an international guest is president at such a ceremony. And President Moon was moved to congratulate this noble veteran and to thank him for providing leadership and courage in the face of great adversity. And he offered testimony that it was the bravery of men like Colonel Puckett that restored and have maintained and preserved freedom and dignity and freedom of expression in South Korea to this very day. And so it's symbolic of the reverence that all of us as Americans have for our veterans. As Port Chairman and as a member of the Port Commission for 12 years, I was proud to have worked with Al Spate, the late and great Al Spate, to designate the Port of Corpus Christi as a strategic military port. And you might remember that during those years, that we received the first military ships, the first military cargo from what was then Operation Enduring Freedom during our war in Iraq. So ironically, a few years later, in 2009, as I entered the last term of my eight years as Chairman and the last year of my 12 years of service on the Port Commission, Flint Hills donated 54 acres of land to Nuasis County to be designated for exclusive use as a cemetery for our veterans. Betty Jean Longoria valuably fought for that. She developed a kinship and a friendship with Flint Hills that allowed this generous gift to become a reality. Senator Chuenah Hossa also did much to make this possible. So here we are, a full circle 12 years later, to complete the vision that was expressed by the leaders at that time, your fellow Commissioners as well. So now we have an opportunity to establish local control and work towards establishing the Nuasis County Veteran Cemetery literally as a national shrine. As I understand, there are four state-owned veteran cemeteries, Mission, which incidentally has apparently entered into an agreement with GLO, Abilene, and Kaline. But ours is the largest such cemetery. And we, as citizens of Nuasis County, voters and taxpayers, should take immeasurable pride in having this opportunity to enter into this agreement that will symbolize the greatness of our veterans, show our reverence and our respect to our veterans, and give them a final eternal resting place so that we may memorialize their contributions to America and to our community. I ask that you work with each other so that we can add a further dimension to identifying and fortifying Nuasis County as Military County, USA. We have obviously major military installations here, Corpus Christi Army Depot. And as I mentioned, the port has a strategic military port. It's the first one in the nation to be so designated. And now we have this opportunity to establish a national shrine, which will make us a leader. No contract is perfect. It's sort of like in my practice of law, when we reach a settlement in a mediation, the best settlement is one that no one is happy with because it's an opportunity to walk away with a sense of accomplishment. So I ask that you give this contract, which I believe provides local maintenance and control to Nuasis County and also allows a way out. There's escape clauses evident in the contract. I've reviewed it and read it and believe that based upon my legal knowledge and understanding of contracts, that it is an opportunity and a wise one for Nuasis County to invest in our future while also honoring our noble and distinguished veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next person, Tyner, to be called is...
Next, we have Moses Estrada.
Good afternoon. My name is Moses Estrada, Commander of Dr. Hector P. Garcia, American GI Forum Founder Chapter. If you're familiar with our veterans organization, if you're not familiar with our veterans organization, we have awarded over $345,000 in scholarships to veterans and veterans as students throughout the Coastal Bend and surrounding communities. The reason that Dr. Hector P. Garcia, American GI Forum, is here because we feel that the present Coastal Bend Veteran Cemetery contract is fair for the county and the community. I alone with other members have visited many Caucasian support to support the families of veterans and we have seen how the Veterans Cemetery is well-keeping and the grounds keepers. Of course, we're very proud of what we have. The Dr. Hector P. Garcia, American GI Forum members are in support of the present contract and we hope it can be approved so you can have local control of the Coastal Bend Veteran Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tyner, are there anybody, I know there were the three individuals present inside Commissioners' courtroom, are there anybody, is there anybody waiting online to deliver public comment at this time?
Judge, we do see Martin Longoria online, but he's having trouble connecting to the audio. And so I will stand by and I texted him and we'll see if we can get that working.
Understood. But does that complete, to your knowledge, public comment at this time?
It does. It does, Judge.
Okay. And we'll move on. Thank you for everybody's comments. We'll move on to the proclamation and resolutions forum, which is F1 at this time. And if Mr. Longoria comes back, well, then what we can do is open public comment again. Or if anybody else comes in to the room, desire, we can always make that accommodation. So at this time, I'm going to move to F1 in recognition of the London Boys Basketball Program and ask that Tyner read the resolution that is before us. And also welcome anybody into the room at this time. If they're waiting, we would love, here they come. I can see them now. Wonderful. We welcome everybody from the London ISD Program here to celebrate this great athletic team. And as they're ushered into the courtroom, we'll give it some time for Tyner to take the podium. Okay, great. Tyner, when everybody's settled, you may proceed.
I'll proceed, Judge. This is recognizing the London Boys Basketball Program for their successful 2021 program. Whereas the London Boys Basketball Program, led by head coach Ron Lawver, finished a successful 2021 season with a district record of 6-0 and an overall record of 23-3. The team also finished the season as district champions, bi-district champions, area champions, regional quarterfinal champions, and regional semifinalists. Whereas the London Boys Basketball Team finished with the highest state ranking in London history. They finished ranked number four in the state in the final 3A TABC coaches poll. They also finished number two in the state in the final 3A Hoops Insider Poll, which is the highest season-ending ranking of any team sport in the history of London High School. Whereas players from the London Boys Basketball Program were honored as follows. Joshua Chesney, Academic All-State, All-State, All-Region Team, First Team All-South Texas Unanimous District MVP, Academic All-District, TABC State All-Star, the first ever London basketball player selected, Coastal Bend All-Star, London All-Time Leading scorer, rebounder, shot blocker, and three points made. Ty Leonard, Academic All-State, All-Region Team, District Defensive Player of the Year, Second Team All-South Texas, Coastal Bend All-Star. Bryce Marshall, District Newcomer of the Year. Patrick McNorton, First Team All-District. Preston Casalis, All-Region Team, First Team All-District. Pearson Casalis, All-South Texas Newcomer of the Year, District Newcomer of the Year. Dylan Spencer, Second Team All-District. Ames Buchanan, Second Team All-District. Whereas the London Boys Basketball Program players include seniors Joshua Chesney and Ty Leonard, juniors J.J. Rich, Bryce Marshall, Patrick McNorton, Sean Moreno, sophomores Preston Casalis, Pearson Casalis, Dylan Spencer, Ames Buchanan, Cade Kinghorn, Jet Christmas, and Andrew Williams. Coaching staff for the London Boys Basketball Program are head coach Ron Lawver, assistant coach John Harris, and athletic director Robbie Moreno.
Now therefore be it resolved. Tyner?
I'm sorry, Commissioner. Now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County that the court hereby recognizes the London Boys Basketball Program for their athletic accomplishments and achievements.
So, Judge, so moved?
Second.
You're mute, Judge. You're on mute, Judge?
You are so right. I asked for the motion, but I did hear it. And may I also have a second at this time? And having heard a second, let's have great discussion and praise for this outstanding high school athletic program. Commissioner Chesney, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Judge. First of all, I think, and this is my bad, I didn't catch this one, I think Bryce was Sixth Man of the Year. And yeah, I will get that corrected. I apologize for that. And for the court's edification too, you might recognize the Casalis names. Their grandfather served here for many, many years. And so we want to recognize their achievements as well as the entire team. This was a great team effort. It was so much fun to watch this team. Great group of guys, really enjoyed what they did. Like every athlete and every team that we've had in here, they made their sacrifices. And it was definitely a difficult year with COVID because it was not easy. And we had a shortened season. They played 26 games this year. They played 38 games last year and went to the same point in the playoffs. So if that gives you an idea of the shortened season, then that's exactly what they went through. Certainly a strong source of personal pride for me. I'm going to try to get through it all without getting emotional and I may have to let Mr. Modas take over over there. But anyway, I'm really proud of, I'm going to keep mine shorter than I usually do with teams today, but I really am very proud of the efforts. I know everybody in Nuasis County is extremely proud of the efforts that these boys made. And just for, everyone knows, the London Boys Basketball Team did end up the season as the highest-ranked team in the Nuasis County area, I believe, based on their state ranking. And it's obviously pretty hard to get higher than two in one poll and four in another. Coach Moreno is here and Coach Harris is here. We'd like to definitely hear from, and Coach Lawver's not here today for personal reasons and we want to send out our thoughts and prayers to him. But if Coach Moreno or Coach Harris, and then we'd like to have the captains say something and if anybody else up here, obviously Judge or anybody else wants to say anything. But we didn't get to do this last year. They got to the fourth round last year and COVID was, this is one of the casualties of COVID. We didn't get to bring these boys up here last year and got a few that didn't get to make it up here from last year's team. And we're glad, very glad that we got to do it. And one extra little point that I'll make is these guys lost by two in overtime to the eventual state champs. And so that's why they got that number two ranking because that team that won the state championship rolled everybody else except for London. And quite honestly, sore subject there too, about a few bad calls down the stretch that we've all had to live with, but couldn't pass on that without saying, especially for Mr. Buchanan and Mr. Casalis who aren't here, believe me, we spent many nights going through and Mr. Leonard as well, going through all the bad calls that were down the stretch. But that's sports and that's the way it goes. But doesn't make anybody any less proud of everything that y'all have achieved, both as athletes and as student athletes. So I'll turn it over to whoever wants to speak up here and then would ask the coach, athletic director, captains to say something. Thank you, Judge.
Let's hear from Commissioners and then we'd love to hear from the coaches. And if the coaches would like to pass the mic to any of their players for comment, we would welcome that as well. At this time, I'll just kind of roll call it. Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Judge. Now, you mentioned Casalis. I think I also got to meet their great-grandfather, Jay Casalis. He was the Director of Probation at the old courthouse. So anyway, he was a great man and guys, congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Modas?
Thank you, Judge. Do you think Commissioner Chesney is a little proud of this team? Maybe just a little bit more, just like having a favorite child, but we know he would come and debrief and just try to let him talk through some of the great games, but some of the tough games, especially the last one. We spent a good amount of time talking about it there in my office. But we're very proud of you all, as we are of all our teams, but especially the history that you all set. And nothing can make up for our lost season last year, but to kind of make up for those guys that are already into college. But, you know, great things have happened from your school and your program and we hope that we'll continue to see that in years to come. So congratulations on the well-received season and also just the way you have represented your school, your community, and your county.
Thank you, Commissioner Modas. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Congratulations. You guys, you know, you're not only stars on the basketball court, but you know, you got to be bigger stars than that. And that's your education. That's a big star. When you finish here, go to college, you finish college, then that's something to really talk about. You can talk about basketball right now, but four or five years from now, you'll be talking about how you graduated, how you graduated, and what kind of degree you have. So you guys will be taking our place someday. So, well, sports are good. Education is your freedom, okay? So stay with it, continue, and we'll expect to see you when you graduate. Okay? Good luck, guys.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your words and for the London Basketball Team that are present with us in the courtroom, for parents and fans and for coaches and administrators. Let me just say on behalf of Nuasis County that we are immeasurably proud of you. But we are proud because not only were you champions in our hearts, but you also showed us what it meant to have true character and true love of the game. You have gone through a remarkable time in history and you found a way to persist, to do the thing that you love, to do it well, to do it safely, and to do it without complaint. I believe that these are the life skills that will carry you far in your future. I also want to say that I thank you very much because it's always a treat to have a member of our own family bring one of their family members. And if there's one thing that I have learned throughout the course of my life's experience is that there are not enough words to say how our children bring us together. It is the children of Nuasis County that make us fight for what we believe in. They make us better human beings. They make us stronger and better elected officials. And so as we close out this season of a school year, how fitting it is to have one of our own be recognized along with his teammates in celebration of the victories that they achieved together and also just the testament of what it means to really be a band of brothers. Thank you for allowing us to celebrate you and we would love to hear from your coach at this time. Coach?
Thank you very much, Judge Canales. Commissioner Chesney, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Mares, and Commissioner Hernandez, thank you so much for having us here today and giving us this recognition. There's not a greater group of guys out there, so these guys definitely deserve it. I want to say our leader, Coach Lawver, is unfortunately unable to be here today. He deserves all this credit for taking this team and this program to the pinnacle that it is now. So we wish him well. But, you know, unfortunately, he couldn't be here today, but he definitely does deserve all the credit. This group of guys here, I mean, you know, that's easily the best basketball team in the Coastal Bend. I'm sure people would want to, you know, debate me on that. I would win. I truly feel these guys are the best and they will continue to be the best for years to come. So I do want to thank you guys again and Judge Canales for, you know, letting us come here and giving us recognition to the community. Thank you very much. Does Ty or Josh, one of you guys want to come up and say a couple of words, please?
First off, thank you, Judge Canales, and the fact that you're here today. It's a huge honor, especially we put in lots of hours of work and a lot of time went into this, so it's nice to get recognized for it. Yeah, this team was great. In a year of uncertainty, it was always a constant, you knew these guys would show up to play and we would go hard and we would try our best. So it made my senior year a lot more enjoyable to have these great group of guys here today. And throughout the entire year, it was just a great experience. So thank you.
Thank you. So well spoken, well said. Is there anyone else that would like to make commentary at this time?
Judge, I tried to get my son to go up there, but he just wouldn't do it. So, you know, he doesn't like to talk like I do.
You're not like your dad.
Yeah. I have to embarrass him a little bit.
Sometimes the written word speaks for itself. And I think that if anybody really was listening to Tyner's accomplishments of this team, not one word needs to be spoken to truly feel the stellar excellence of not only your son, but of the entire group. to truly feel the stellar excellence of not only your son, but of the entire group. So sometimes it's okay, Joshua, to speak softly and carry a big stick, or in your case, your big hands with that ball in the hoop. Congratulations on being the MVP, the unbelievable scorer that you were, but as you well know, in basketball, it's all about the team. And so congratulations to you and to your entire team. It looks like Michael Robinson has taken the podium, so I'll yield.
Thank you, Judge. I just wanted to speak up at this point because Brent and I share something now. We both are parents of a child who was a district MVP, and we know what that means in terms of the amount of work and effort that it takes to achieve that level of success. And my son also was a quiet person. He led by his actions on the court, just as your son has done. And that is shown in the selflessness of his teammates to provide him the ball, because he needs that to do what he needs to do. And that speaks to the relationship that you formed with your teammates here, that the relationships that were formed by the coaching staff and how they led you guys. And so as a parent who has traveled around the state of Texas like many of you parents have done, it's a great honor just to be around kids who are performing at this level. And so like Commissioner Jaggs said, you know, don't forget your education. That's going to carry you. Your work ethic that you put forth in your athletics is what you will put forth in everything that you approach in life, and that ability to work with others will serve you well. So my congratulations again to this team.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. That was well said, and again, many thanks to those that have joined us here today, and I know the audience who's present perhaps for other reasons, join me in expressing our gratitude to the parents who truly make all the sacrifices for their children. For the teammates, I just want to leave closing remarks. If you don't, if you haven't already done this, I would strongly suggest that sometime between now and the time you cross that stage, particularly if you're a senior, that you do express your gratitude to your administrators, your teachers, and your family. It would be wonderful to think that we do everything all by ourselves, but we all know that without the support system, we could not achieve the greatness that we've just been lauding you for. And so like a strong house, the foundation that it's built upon is the reason that you can withstand any storm. So please take the time to thank those that love you, that cheer for you, that even drag you to all those practices and, you know, sometimes even scold you. They are so proud, and they know that every minute that you were on the court, those are indelible memories for them as well. So as they say, let's take our vote. All those in favor of this great recognition, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Commissioner, would you like a picture at this time?
Yes, ma'am, we'll try to center it where you're in the background, if that's okay, and we'll get everybody up here in the well.
I'll let you guys assemble that and down there on the, in front of the ceramic seal.
Just in there, just fill in there.
The problem with this group is they're so tall. They have blocked all of the shorties. But commissioners, just you'll find a hole and where you can be seen, a gap, find a gap, and thank you for whoever's taking the photo.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Coach. Sometimes I wish we could do recognitions at the beginning, at the middle, at the end. They would remind us of the best of us. It makes you feel so good. Thank you all for coming and for allowing us to spend the quality of time that these boys deserved. But at this time, we will move to the agenda and move to item number G1, G1, and I will allow Tyner to explain this item that you might recall was on last week's agenda. Tyner?
I'm sorry, Judge. What I'm going to ask today about South Texas Water Authority is, we had some people apply before it was clear that they had to live within the district, and we need to get everything in order and make sure that everybody is treated fairly on this. We actually had, so we're going to ask that the court table South Texas Water Authority, but at the same time, we do have an agenda item, which is consent agenda item A, to allow us to post again. We'll notify the applicants. We also got word that from South Texas Water Authority that you cannot hold another public office, and so we need to check, at least check into that, at least with regard to Rosie Colleen. And so we're going to ask to table this item and let us get it all in order, and we'll bring it back.
Okay, so do I have a table, a motion for the table at this time?
Move to table, Judge.
And a second, and all those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
And then Judge, if you could go ahead, along those lines, if we could get approval for 2A to put this out again? Yes, please.
Right, let's just keep it in sequence, which is the 2A is the approved application procedure for place four. It falls under a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve such an application procedure?
Second.
Okay, I think I heard the second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just to complete the items under G, this is just my announcement by way of transparency that we had a vacancy on the Nuasis County Development Commission pursuant to Chapter 381 of the Texas Local Government Code. The county judge makes those appointments, and so I'm going to name Wayne Squires to this Nuasis County Development Commission. He's excited to serve, and I look forward to having them make their quarterly report to the whole commission in June. So looking forward to having the Development Commission come before us, and we have an additional board member. The next item on the agenda is regular agenda, and agenda items number one is a carryover as well from last court, and that's discuss and consider the approval of the supplemental agreement number three to Energy Services between Nuasis County and Lockwood Andrews Newman. And this is regarding to the Energy Saving Services contract, but it's my understanding that while progress has been made, it is not ready at this time. The two parties are talking. You'll recall there were some issues regarding the review of these documents, given the fact that there might be some indemnification clauses and some other matters. And so at this time, I'd move to table item number one to June the 9th, and would ask for a second.
Second.
Okay, and any further discussion? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, great. And the next item is discuss and consider the extension of Declaration of Disaster regarding the May 21 flooding events, 2021 flooding events. And here with us is Melissa Mungia, and she is going to take the podium and talk to us about our flooding events that occurred a week, is it been a week? It seems like an eternity, but it seemed a week ago, and I know many of you in your precincts struggled trying to assist our small towns with what is known as chronic low-lying areas and poor drainage, and every time we have these torrential rains, it sure does wreak havoc. Melissa, tell us about what went on, and talk to us about the disaster declaration that I signed and what we're asking court to do today.
Sure. Good morning, Judge and commissioners. We did experience severe weather and flooding on the 19th rolling into the 20th, and then declared on the 21st. That system that came in was, was holding a tremendous amount of rain. We experienced, the whole region experienced rain totals from eight to 10. Some areas, like Rockport and other, got 19 inches of rain. This rain has caused a lot of flooding in our areas of our community that we know flood already. It was just such a large amount that it, that it caused a lot of, a lot of issues. So we have, that evening, or I should say that day, we received calls from the City of Driscoll, City of Bishop, that they were removing individuals from their homes. Later on, I received a call from a gentleman that lives off of County Road 73 informing that he and his neighbors had water in their homes. Once I start to hear that there's water inundation in individual homes, and we have potential damages, which we knew with the flooding, that we could see road damage, culvert damage, certainly debris collection having to occur in those drainage ditches and other, those are the types of things that trigger us to do a declaration. We had to take preventative measures prior to the storm's arrival to make sure we were shoring up areas, bringing in resources that are required to prevent areas from flooding, water pumps, all kinds of action that was taken across the county and really across the state. So as of right now, we're the seventh county to declare, and that's declarations being made everywhere from Beaumont down to our area. We also have the secondary system, the tropical system that came in and impacted more of the Victoria Crossroads. This particular type of system, both the flood event and the raining that occurred because of the tropical system, it takes a little bit longer for us to get an idea of what's going on in the community. We can't access the roads when they're full of water. We can't see the roads when they're full of water, and so that collection of damages and potential repairs comes a little bit later in storms like this. So we're still gathering information. I spoke to Drainage District Two yesterday, just wanting to know who, who they need to send their documentation to. They triggered a lot of overtime and folks to go out there and make sure everything was ready to handle that amount of rain. So we have different agencies and jurisdictions and responders that were activated for this storm. All of that has a monetary cost to it. We have exceeded our threshold for Nuasis County, so based on what I've received, both from Public Works having to do with roads and culverts, from what I'm anticipating from the Drainage District, we also got damages submitted to us by John Cox out at the Nuasis County Airport. He, his, his flight line was hit by lightning several times and requiring repair. So collectively, all of those together, we're almost at $1.4 million, so we've exceeded the county threshold. Now we find ourselves exactly where we were at for Hurricane Hannah, where we have damage, we've identified there's damage, we have the total, but now it's about meeting the state threshold. So I haven't heard anything from the state on whether they're going to declare or not. I've been getting a lot of questions about individual assistance programs, and I know the commissioners had a couple of questions as well. We want to get this federally declared, because it does open up programs like the Individual Assistance Program, which is going to help our community recover, not just our community, but the surrounding counties as well. So the more agencies and jurisdictions around here that submit that damage documentation to my office, the faster we can reach that number. Again, the state is collecting information from the other areas within the state that have acquired damage as well, and making sure that that's getting totaled. So when I know something about where the state total is, I'll be able to give you a little bit more information. But we saw this coming as far as the declaration. We were already talking about it, because we know how vulnerable our drainage system is here. We know how vulnerable we are to floods, and we know how low-lying we are as well. And so anytime we hear that a substantial amount of rain is coming our way, those are the first concerns that we have. What about our residents that live in the low-lying areas? We did trigger opening, excuse me, opening shelters that day, because we did find out that folks were evacuated from both Driscoll and Bishop. So we identified two shelters in the western area to ensure that if those individuals were removed from their homes, they had a place to go. When the tropical system came in on the back end of that, over the weekend, Friday evening into Saturday, we were prepared to stand those up if necessary, but we were lucky enough here to not be impacted by additional rain. So I think the extension of this declaration is really important, because we have to have the declaration in place. We have to be counted towards the total, and the state needs our total as well. Our other partners that, that experienced even more damage than we did, they're relying on the same things that we did during Hurricane Hannah, which is the other jurisdictions submitting all of their damage as well, so that we can reach that, that state threshold. If this becomes federally declared, then of course, the Public Assistance Program and the Individual Assistance Program and all of the processes after that will open up. If it doesn't become declared, we recover locally, like we find ourselves probably going to be doing with Hannah. So we're still waiting to hear back from the, from the appeal, but this is one of those disasters. It's bad for us, but it's not so bad that it becomes automatically declared like the winter storm. That was across the state. It was a huge event, and they knew right off the bat that we were going to need federal assistance. This is a little bit different, because we were impacted locally. I can open the floor to any questions you have right now?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, commissioners. Do you have any questions at this time of Melissa, or any, any comments that you would like to make?
Just, just a quick, y'all, I guess you'll continue to update us, obviously, and then it said it will expire at the Commissioners Court action or something like, I can't remember the exact wording. That'll just be brought back whenever y'all feel it's time to...
Sure, it just needs to be extended every seven days, and so we just want to make sure we extend it right now, because we don't, we don't fully know anything yet, and we want to have the declaration in place. When the next seven days come up, we can open the floor to discussion. Is it necessary? Do we need it? Is it not going to happen? And have those discussions. But it's in my opinion right now that we should go ahead and extend this, just to make sure that if they do end up declaring as a state or federally, where we have everything in line. This also opens the door to people submitting that damage and those cost assessments and photographs to us, because we're working towards a federal declaration.
Sounds reasonable. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. So just as a point of clarification, so this is the extension. So I signed the declaration already. It was signed...
On the 21st.
Gosh, the 21st, and that was, you know, also when the system in the Gulf was, had formed, and that was included, but thank goodness, missed us, if you will, created light precipitation, but, so we were covered for both angles. But this is the extension, it's required under the law, and then as Melissa says, it stays in effect after today, and we can always revisit it. But I know that as late as last night, Drainage District Number Two is gathering all of their damages and expenses and sending to us. So again, we're going to be collecting a cumulative, like we all do for everything else, damage assessment, a damage statement of values across the county. It should be noted that many roads were washed out. In some cases, you could see the base coming up. It was almost quite remarkable to see what it looked like two days after the storm. It almost looked worse than during the storm because of upstream water flow coming, particularly in the Blue Vonnit area, Commissioner Modas's precinct, and in front of Robstown ISD, their high school. And again, it's my understanding with regards to the airport, Melissa, that those repairs were being made, and those were lightning-driven, the damages that were affecting the Nuasis County Airport were lightning-driven.
The cost of the repair was just under $4,000 for those lightning strikes.
So we got fortunate there. Are there any questions from Melissa? If you wouldn't mind, it's hard for me to hear. I'm all the way up, but if you would just take the mic at this time, I'd be appreciative.
I just, Judge, I was going to make a comment, too. My understanding is, Melissa, that, and the reason I'm asking is... My understanding is, Melissa, that and the reason I'm asking is for more than one reason, obviously, safety concerns, but the charity race that I do for the American Diabetes Association is this Saturday, and I'm hearing there might be coastal flooding this week and really high tides. And so I'm assuming we're keeping a, I know you are, I mean, I know y'all are keeping a close eye on that, too. But so I think this is definitely, you know, pertinent because I my understanding is there's a lot of stuff still potentially coming and out there, and it's just it's just kind of a tough weather time.
I'm seeing this very similar now. I wasn't here in twenty fifteen, but I heard about the the process and the actual event or multiple events. In two thousand and fifteen, the floods were federally declared. Again, it was several different rainstorms, several different areas that were impacted, and some areas like Oasis County that had, you know, more than one event. And so they're anticipating weather disturbances through the week, potentially on the weekend. Any of those that do cause an actual event here, similar to what happened on the nineteenth going into the twentieth, that very likely would be rolled into the same disaster. And that's where we found ourselves in twenty fifteen, getting the federal declaration. It was multiple jurisdictions over a period of time that were impacted the same way with rain events and flooding, and it built up to a singular, larger event. If that's what happens with the nineteen-twenty flood, the tropical system that produced rain in the mid Middle Coast, and then anything else that comes after that, is going to kind of be collectively added into a single disaster, I believe, like twenty fifteen. So there's potential here for federal declaration, especially if any areas in Texas continue to experience flooding and severe weather.
And Judge, you know, I, like you, have been out at a lot of the storm centers, flooding locations, as I know the rest of the Commissioners Court were. I'm glad you brought Blue Bonnet because that was the day that you were going to make your big press conference with the other county judges in our region to announce that we we finally got that big regional study that that's important and impacts communities like Blue Bonnet, GI Forum, and Petronilla, Driscoll, and all and many others. You know, I was out there for for a few hours, I think it was Thursday, and you're right, it seemed like it was worse on Thursday. And I just want to point out, you know, you want to talk about coordination. We had Oasis County Drainage District on hand. We had the Water District Number Five also reaching out to me to assist. And then we had our Public Works out there, which our Public Works Director, Juan Pimentel and Jerry, his number two, were out there on site. The road had broke. It fractured. It was bubbling water from the drainage ditch fifteen feet away. It was it had come underneath the embankment and through the asphalt. And they were literally pulling out pieces of asphalt, and you could see the base material, the caliche, spilling out into the roadway because the water flow was so strong. This this regional study is definitely needed. We need also, you know, short-term planning and the long-term planning. And so I'm glad that that is in place. But the the community shared and showed a lot of patience, but obviously, there was high-water rescue needs that were met. By by way, the Drainage District had recently purchased a vehicle. I hope that we can look at that in the budget or with maybe perhaps any of the funding that we get to help purchase at least a few vehicles that we can station throughout the county for those kind of events, high-water rescue events. And I think that's one of them. And two, more coordination. Like you, Judge, I was making phone calls on site out there, talking to you and talking to everyone else we could to make sure that it got fixed. And, you know, we got temporary patches, but that is that's a whole lot of money that's going to go there. And unfortunately, Blue Bonnet and other communities out there are just in a bowl. They're just in a basin there that no matter what kind of rain we get, and especially the flow that's coming from northwest Oasis County and, of course, from Jimwells and beyond, that's coming into our community out there. And so that's a big part. People walking in knee-deep water, and it's just it's horrible. But all those things I know you're aware of, I was out there at the airport since yesterday where John Cox, the director, said they probably had close to eleven inches, even though the official record in the city of Robstown was maybe eight and a half to nine. And so that that's a whole lot of rain in one period of time, as he saw it easing up out there, and then the lightning strikes that they had as well. So a whole lot in throughout the county, but Driscoll, City of Driscoll and outside of Driscoll also were impacted, which I know you all know, and I sent some pictures to you all. So we have a lot of farmland that was sold many decades ago that we are having to try to deal with now. And it's every time it floods that we're having to ask for the community's patience in in planning out. And it's not anything that we've done or haven't done. In fact, I think this has been a very proactive court in trying to help mitigate a lot of those issues. But it's hard when you're asking people that are having to flee their homes because they've had water go in and breach their home. And so we're having that all over Precinct Three, and I'm sure in the other precincts as well. So I just want the community to understand that that we do get it and that we are working hand-in-hand with our partners as best as we can. And to be honest with you, I think the response we had to the drainage, especially out there in Robstown and Blue Bonnet area, shows how much we are working with our partners now than ever before. And so there's no there's no turf issues there. It's just, hey, we have a problem, and we're going to fix it. And I think that that's how we have to do it every time. And so I thank you all for for working on this and giving this opportunity to hopefully extend until we can see how will it be recognized as some sort of disaster area on the federal level. But you're right, I wasn't around, Melissa, either in twenty fifteen. It was about a year and a half before I came on as Commissioner Court, but everyone would talk about that when I first got on. And the amount of rain that we had, just in that one twenty-four-hour period or so just last week, exceeded any twenty-four-hour period out there in the twenty fifteen. The only problem was that we had a full month of flooding in twenty fifteen, in the May of twenty fifteen, as compared to just basically over one day. So I can imagine if we had that type of frequency in one month, what kind of trouble that we would be in. So whatever this study does, Judge, obviously, I know you've said twelve to eighteen months it'll take, but if there's anything in the short term that we can do to help mitigate those issues, whether it's purchasing mobile, industrial-sized pumps that we can help get, maybe have one stationed at every precinct in the county, and then maybe send all of them to one location if there's one or two particular problem areas to pump it out. That, I think, would really help us in the short term until we can figure out, do we need any kind of detention ponds or any other kind of drainage ditches expanded or created? But I think we need that because we're going to have rain events again, and we're just going to be putting those neighbors into into danger and not having access to their homes and needing to get out, obviously, when the water levels increase. So if that's something that we can look at, Judge, I would really appreciate if we need to get it on the agenda or something that can be done at a faster rate based on emergency, since we're in a declared emergency, I think that that would be helpful for us. And that's the request I'm asking to you and our emergency management so we can be prepared going into hurricane season. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. And we did get Robstown a pump. That was their saving grace. They had to run the pump till one o'clock in the morning, but that's why they were able to alleviate the neighborhood, the Blue Bonnet neighborhood, around the Robstown High School area as well. So making sure that we have those types of resources. There's never a perfect disaster. There's no such thing. But this is, or perfect timing, but this is a good sign that Oasis County needs help with drainage and that we do have low-lying areas and flood problems and drainage issues. And this is highlighting that for us. And we have a study we're going to put underway, and this is all in an effort to mitigate these problems. Like you said, we we got a lot of rain in a short amount of time, but what would happen if it rained like that for three days in a row? Where would we find ourselves at? All of our, one of the issues that we encountered was the potential shelters that we may use in certain communities weren't available because they were already getting flooded out as well. So creating that contingency plan for extreme flooding is something we need to do here as well. We'll be sure to start looking at those types of resources, kind of stockpiling the resources that we know, like the pumps and other high, high-profile vehicles that can aid in that evacuation, if you will. I got confirmation from the state that there were no fatalities. There were no, in our area, there were no live rescues. There were only evacuations, which is in an effort to remove somebody before the water becomes an issue. So we're lucky there. We're lucky that it wasn't an event that we lost anybody. But I did want to say that, Commissioner, as soon as you reached out to the judge, she reached out to me, said, hey, Commissioner Maras is concerned. We've got five to six roads. Awareness for us, for Public Works, does our damage assessments for the most part. The county is huge, right? You don't even know where to start. But any resident, you Commissioners, the calls that you get from your constituents, please forward that to us because we can send Juan Pimentel and his crew out there to do a quick damage assessment when we are able to directly identify those areas. If you're getting calls from residents that are concerned because the water is getting close to their front door, if you want to email me, call me, text me, or the judge, she'll always get that information to me and everybody in the public. If you're seeing damage or your neighbor's homes, the awareness of those helps us send the crews out to do the the true damage assessments and put a monetary value, excuse me, a monetary equivalent to what they're seeing, and this helps us get a declaration more quickly. And it also helps us get resources out to your area as well. So awareness and participating and helping us be aware and being extra eyes for us. So please feel free to always report anything to us during a disaster or even times of non-disaster, and we can get teams or a team or a single person, whatever is needed, to address the issue at the time.
You know, Melissa, we took the tour on Thursday after the rain stopped, and we went to about six locations. One I was really concerned about, too, was the one where they just cut the ribbon about a month ago, the mild drainage ditch in Petronilla Estates, the FM fourteen and fifteen. And there was water in the yards, but no water in the homes. And that dish was full to the top. It's a huge ditch, the Drainage District Number Two, and really with my partners on that. And I commend them for doing a good job, you know. The hydrocity worked good, you know, in that area. So I was really concerned about that area because, you know, we had, last year, we had a big conference out there, the media, and everybody was out there, you know. But this year, nobody was out there for whatever reason, but, you know, but it really worked, you know. We want to commend the Drainage District again for the work that they did. For about six months, we were out there, and it took, that's how long it took to get that dish ready. So we got it ready just in time, I guess you could say, you know, but, you know, because it really helped the people at Petronilla Estates.
I'm very glad to hear that.
The Belt Lane wasn't too bad. The Petronilla School wasn't wasn't that bad this time around either. Tera Grande was was good, except for one of the roads. But the other one that really would bother us a lot was Petronilla Number Five, and that was really under water a lot. And we know what some of the issues are there, and we're trying to, we're working with them now with the Drainage District Number Two, and hopefully, tech's on. But out there, you know, you just, you can do whatever you want, but if you don't have retention ponds, it's going to be hard, you know. So we talked to some people that they were walking in water, say, you want to sell just two lots here because they're empty, you know, and of course, they don't want to sell, right? So I said, think about it, game of cards. Call me back, and we'll be glad to buy it from you if you want to, you know, so we can just put a pond in here, and maybe you catch the water. So those are the things, I guess, after the storm, you go out and, you know, you try to see what you can do. And I appreciate JJ and his team out there with me, his engineer for the Drainage District Number Two. And we had some, District Number Two, also people out there also checking it out. And Public Works out there also, Jerry and the crew. So I think that everybody was out there just doing their job, and I commend for everybody for taking the effort of doing it. So I think everybody, I saw a lot of teamwork out there.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Excuse me, Melissa, I also wanted to know, what are the possibilities of getting military vehicles up there, vehicles that stand real high where you can drive into?
To purchase or to request ahead of time?
Either purchase or make arrangements when we have incidents like this, maybe we can have their help.
We can definitely try to create a contract that gets us what we need. I would say that in an event like this, where we don't really, it's not quite like a hurricane where we can see it coming for some time, the types of resources that we're acquiring the expediency makes it a little difficult to request from the state a resource like that. But it doesn't mean that we can't find those items to purchase for ourselves or go in partnership with the Naval Air Station or some of the other areas and agencies that have these vehicles and just be in contract mutual aid agreement that we have for many of the other services that we need during, before, during, or after a disaster. But we can definitely look at these types of military-style, high-profile vehicles, water pumps, things like that. There's other types that we've looked at as far as like sandbags versus sandbags. They have these these tubes that you actually fill with water. It's like fighting water with water, and it allows the bag to fill out the spaces versus a sandbag is going to be quite rigid, and you're not going to be able to fill all the holes in between sandbags. So there's different kinds of purchases that we can look at making for mitigating flood damage, and I can work with Public Works and Edward and some other folks and you as well, Commissioners, on what what your precinct needs to battle that that flood issue for your precinct. It might just be that you need something to help kind of barricade the water. Because I know you mentioned the the water level, what we received, what they said our rain total was and what they actually received. You have to remember that we had a lot of runoff. So you have the actual rainfall total, but then you have the total that it becomes after the water drains down to where it's going, and that's why you saw such high totals compared to what they were saying we had. And those are things to really think about. You also have to be careful when you start blocking water, right? Changing the direction of water, blocking water. We learned that in just our studies and how we're going to do retention ponds, some of the other culverts or ditches that we've created and the impact that that has down the line on somebody else. So these are all things to be considered. But since COVID and the winter storm and Hannah, really, we're starting to really try to build a reserve for ourselves. Judge has been working really hard on on doing this with not only, you know, food and water supplies, but other supplies like this. You know, we need to have an inventory. Oasis County, we have partnerships and we have mutual aid agreements, but we've seen so many disasters in the last two years that we should really look at preparing ourselves for having our own resources. There's just certain resources that we know won't go wasted here, right? If it has to do with hurricane response, if it has to do with flooding, we already know we're going to use it. And so it's not wasted dollars. It's not a resource that's going to be sitting in a warehouse for five years before we use it. We know we're going to use it regularly and purchases like military-style vehicles and such. They may be more expensive, but we might want to look at creating a cash of these types of resources for ourselves. We learned during the winter storm, you can only do so much when the roadways are closed, right? So if we had this flooding issue, we weren't able to bring in the pump, we weren't able to bring in, we had access through our ESDs to seven high-water vehicles. If the roadways were closed or frozen over or some other issue like that, we can't get our resources from the outside. So being able to sustain ourselves and to have the resources we need for ourselves in those events that you get cut off from your typical partners or those that you're in agreement with, it's a really good idea, and we should be working towards that as a county.
I was concerned, some of the people in the Colonias area and their septic tanks, you know, how all this flooding would affect them. And I've I've gotten some calls in my office where some of the folks have gotten water into their homes, but there's nothing we can really do about that. I mean, it's caught us all by surprise. But I do want to thank Drainage District Number Two, and I want to thank our Public Works people for being out there, and yourself. And I know Commissioner Modis and Jag, they were all out there. So I want to thank everybody for getting involved. Appreciate that.
And I think when you say, in this case, unlike Hannah, you know, we didn't have individuals impacted by Hannah. It's kind of an argument that FEMA was making is that it was a nuisance hurricane. This event impacted our residents. This event put water in people's homes. This event made us respond and remove people from their homes to safety, and that changes a lot of things. But we still can't get that Individual Assistance Program to help our residents recover without getting it federally declared. There's other programs, if we don't get federally declared, that can help them through the recovery process. But again, we, you know, we know how the Individual Assistance Program works, and there's a whole spread of opportunities that open when a declaration is made federally. Our residents suffer in a lot of different ways and a lot of different areas, and so anything that we can do to encourage this becoming federally declared, to open those types of programs up, it's going to be difficult for our residents to recover on their own.
That's correct. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
So thank you, Melissa. A good report in that it was thorough and comprehensive, and I thank you for answering all the questions and comments, and thank the Commissioners for their their comments as well. And I think what we'll do, Tynor, is make certain that our next commit, our next regular meeting will address our drainage grant and give everybody an update, because this was not a regularly scheduled meeting. We did not place that on this agenda, but it will be before you very soon so that we can address some of the issues that you brought up today with regards to resources. But at this time, what I'd like to do is just acknowledge that this would be our fourth, number four, local disaster declaration in one fiscal year. And the taxingness and And the taxingness and the burden that falls on our Office of Emergency Management is really just, it's tremendous, and again, without belaboring the issue, my thanks to Melissa, it all starts with Melissa and then branches out like a strong tree with good branches to all of the different departments that you've already acknowledged and those partners in our other political jurisdictions. So at this time, I'd look for a motion to extend the declaration disaster regarding the May 2021 flooding events.
I just have one question about the extension, is it going to start after the 28th or it starts now? I mean...
So this extension, go ahead, Judge.
Go ahead, this, go ahead, whoever wants to answer. Jenny?
I think it was Melissa.
So the one that we have was declared on the 21st, it's good for seven days, puts us at the 28th. The declaration extension should take us from the 28th to the, excuse me, would be the...
Twenty ninth, right?
Anybody have a calendar in front of them? The first?
No.
What is it?
The first.
If it's signed today and dated today, it'll start, it should start today.
Today.
The ninth.
To the...
But then it stays in effect?
It stays in effect until it's drawn down after the first extension.
That's correct. I was going to make that point just now.
So we don't have to extend again, Commissioner. I've already, this will be the only extension at this time. We'll keep everybody apprised as to how the state's threshold, we hope that it should get met. Just to remind everybody, that threshold is typically around, is it 39 million?
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine million.
Thirty-nine million. So if the collective counties have that damage, that it would qualify if FEMA were to certify that 39 million dollars of damage. So this is what allows us to get the resources that we need from the state, even though that you think that the crisis is over, if there were to be, let's say, a compromise of the roadways or sinkhole develop because of the water penetration underneath the roadways, this declaration allows us to seek both state resources and any other resources from the federal government that should become available.
Motion approved, Judge.
Is that, does that satisfy the answer?
Right.
Okay, so I'll renew the request to have a motion to extend the declaration of disaster regarding the May 2021 flooding event here in Noises County.
So move, Judge.
Second.
Is there a motion?
Oh, I thought you moved, sorry.
And a second.
Were you not moving, Judge? I'm sorry. Second, move, motion to whatever you'd like.
So we have a motion, and I think I heard us, it's really hard, we're going to have to...
Sorry.
Also invest in better microphones, it's really hard to hear, but I think I have a motion.
It was Commissioner Mares and Commissioner Chesney.
Thank you, thank you so much, Ari. And any other discussion at this time? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, thank you, Melissa, you've got your declaration, and please forward that to Texas Mission of Emergency Management with our thanks for their continuous support.
I will, thank you so much, Judge and Commissioners.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move to the last agenda item that we have posted for today, and that's to discuss and consider the interlocal operation agreement with the General Land Office, the Veterans Land Board for Management and Operations Services for the Coastal Bend State Veterans Cemetery. I would note for the record that this is also the subject of an executive session item, and so like we did before, we'll go into executive session shortly to consult with our lawyer with regards to the legal aspects of this agreement, but first, we do have a small presentation, and I'd ask JJ de la Sarda from our Veteran Services Department, he is the head of that department and has specific knowledge with regards to this particular cemetery, as he was the director for many years. JJ, welcome.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words regarding my experience and involvement with the Veterans Cemetery and its operations. The cemetery was dedicated on Pearl Harbor Day of 2011. To date, it's estimated that over 4,200 veterans and eligible dependents are interred on those hallowed grounds. I had the honor of serving my fellow veterans under the State Veterans Cemetery's program, both at the Rio Grande Valley State Veterans Cemetery and here at the Coastal Bend State Veterans Cemetery from February 2007 to February 2019. Within those 12 years, I worked as a work study, groundskeeper, office manager, assistant director, and director. I can confidently state that I'm well-versed in all aspects of managing the State Veterans Cemetery. The Coastal Bend State Veterans Cemetery holds a special place in my heart because I was involved from its commencement. Mr. Reynaldo G. Chacon, U.S. Army, is a name engraved in my memory because he was the first burial at that cemetery. As a veteran, it's important to those, it's important that those grounds are maintained in pristine honorable conditions for all those who have earned the honor to rest there. This includes having well-manicured dancecape, clean aesthetics, and a sea of beautifully regimented monuments. Mowing, trimming, grave excavation, setting and realigning headstones, and rendering proper military honors are just some of the operations that require a high-level attention to detail. To accomplish this, a loyal team of professionals and a dedicated group of veteran volunteers are essential to manage the day-to-day operations out there. I had the privilege of working closely with various departments throughout the contract drafting process. I've openly shared my experience and knowledge with the departments in support of a common vision, that Noises County present to you, the Commissioners' Court, a viable contract. As a Noises County Veteran Service Officer, I am ready to bring this vision to fruition. I am dedicated not only to Noises County, but to the veterans we serve. If this is the will of the court, my office is ready and willing to manage the Veterans Cemetery. Thank you for your time and your attention, Semper Fi.
Judge, you may be muted.
My bad, I had to unmute. I just, I just said, thank you so much, JJ, and I didn't know, because it's hard to see, but I also asked Dale, but I thought I saw him leave the room, but if there were any questions of Dale, he was one of the leads, if not the lead, to help establish the budget, and as it was posted, you should have a copy of that in the, in your agenda, in your notebook. And so I wanted to make sure that there was adequate, you know, opportunity to ask any questions regarding the budget. I wanted to disclose that there are two issues that are budget-related, and these are items that we do not take up in executive session. So for the audience, we've gotten some good legal advice about what we do talk about when we go to executive session, and what is more proper or appropriate in open session. And so anything having to do with the budget and the finances are really more appropriate in the open session, which is what we're doing right now. And so I wanted to make sure that the auditor had an opportunity to answer any of your questions. As I said, I'd like to disclose that there were two issues that were brought up over the, since the last time we met, which was Friday, and that is insurance, which I think we will get a really good quote here, maybe even by this afternoon. We asked Tac to give us a quote through our insurance broker, Carlisle, and I believe we're waiting on that figure, but I did ask in their worldliness and experience, you know, for them to guesstimate, and that's just so that this court can feel comfortable that the guesstimate seems to be adequate, at least the amount was adequate at $10,000, that's just an estimate, that would be covered by, under the budget that we set. So in other words, we set a budget for insurance needs in the budget that you have before you, and we believe there's a more likely than not scenario that whatever we need to procure is more than satisfied inside the budget that we created for insurance. Secondly, I've been made aware that when you look at the budget that's attached in your packet, that represents a fiscal year budget, but if you notice your contract, it has an effective date that would have a few months plus the fiscal year. So in other words, we need to make an accounting, I will, notation, that if we were to approve this contract, and it would have the effective term as it's stated as July 1, there would be, you know, some months that precede our new fiscal year. So that amount that you see, just for the record, is one fiscal year. So we need to, if you will, from the county attorney's office, and they may have more info to share with us at this point, but we would need to supplement, if you will, those extra months to catch the whole year plus what's left over from this year. And I want to stop there before we go on to make sure that those two items, there are no questions or, or if there are, that we would attempt to answer those at this time through court administration, or through the auditor's office.
I have a question.
Or through the county attorney's office.
I have a question on those items, I think they are.
Yes.
You know, my first question, the auditor would be on pay increases, every year, we, at the budget time, we increase the pay for any employees in Noises County, they're also effective in the same budget, right? Are they, are they not?
Yes, that's a very good question, and that was actually addressed by Dale, and so they were going to make those adjustments. So we said, if, for example, let's just take, this year looks to be a year where actual real inflation, you know, is an issue, right? Cost of living.
Right.
And so if, in our new budget, for instance, that is contemplated to, maybe we give, you know, whether it could be a raise or it could be a cost of living index increase, that would have to be accommodated in this budget.
Okay, so I'm saying, it wouldn't be the same thing, Judge, as given the other ones?
Say that again?
Would it be the same thing as we give our employees here, we'd be offering them the same thing?
Yes, they become, they become a...
Let me comment on that, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me, Judge.
Go ahead.
We've actually been talking about that most of the morning, and I don't, you know, I think there's some items to talk about in closed session, probably. I don't think the Veterans Land Board is going to adjust the budget at this point.
I don't think so either.
Yeah, that, you know, that's not so easy for them to, this particular budget has made it, you know, all the way to the top, but we think we're going to be just fine. And there's ways under 8.05, Section 8.05, to make adjustments in the event something happens. In addition, we spoke to Dale earlier, and he said, and we spoke to Julie as well, and Julie's on, it's like, you know what, if we need to, we will put the Veterans Cemetery in their own pay group if the rest of the people get raises. If that's what it comes to, we'll do it like that. So I think the auditor's not concerned that we're going to have a budget issue in the event Commissioners' Court does give raises. So I think we can adjust.
Also, I would like to mention that for the health insurance, what we put here is the minimum. It could be more, because we don't know, I mean, how much each people is going to have here, so just letting you know, like, it's a minimum here.
And, I'm sorry, were you?
No.
In a...
Actually, I think it's maximum. I thought Dale assumed everybody would get health insurance.
That, that's correct.
We don't know how many people they're going to have, you know, they could have more than one, you know.
Right, she's saying that there's a family, for example, right? There could be a family.
I see what you're saying.
Versus an individual, but Dale took that into, I think, consideration as to what he believed would be the maximum, and so we assumed high rather than low. And again, what Tyner's referring to in your packet that was posted, so we can talk about it, is 8.05, so be sure and refer to 8.05 when you're looking at what happens when we need to have a fee adjustment. In other words, what Tyner's expressing is that this budget has gone all the way through the process at the Veterans Land Board, and so if we need a fee adjustment, we do so per the contract, 8.05, but because, think of it as pre-doing your budget, right? I know that for many of our employees, we looked at salaries as being ones we would love to see adjusted, these are already adjusted, if you will, right? These are coming into us from the standpoint of what is correct for these positions as compared to other Veterans Cemetery employees across the state. So I doubt there would be a correction, is really, is that the gist of it, Tyner? Is that they're coming to you already predisposed to being the right salaries, so there is a way to do a separation if, for instance, there would be a need to...
So you're saying these areas...
To give a cost of living index or something like that.
That's correct, Judge.
So you're saying basically these categories have already been adjusted, and even if we somehow adjusted the categories here, they wouldn't need to be adjusted as well? Is that what, basically, Judge? Is that true?
I think that's what the auditor is suggesting, yes.
That was the auditor's suggestion, and he basically said, look, when we created these positions, we did so with the right dollar in mind. For everybody else, we haven't had that benefit. In other words, these, this budget contemplates all the way through our next fiscal cycle and at the end of 2022, but maybe other employees that we have that haven't addressed yet in budget do not. So this comes to us already adjusted for our fiscal year that is to come. So when we presented it, it was through 2022.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's fair for them also, you know, when we get the raises here, that we'll take care of them. The other two things that I had, Judge, one you mentioned one about starting July the 1st, which would be about three months, right? Is there any way we can start, like, it would be a three-month contract until October the 1st, so we can start a new contract?
Or just start October 1st?
Just start October 1st. We can run through...
I think I heard you, I think you're saying, is there any way, could you repeat the question? Is there any way you could start October 1? Was that the question?
Right, October 1, or if you start July 1st, can we do three months and then start October 1st for the full year?
You know, we've talked about that with the, with the Veterans Land Board at length, even today, and I think it's been suggested that this would be a one-year contract if we do, Belinda just texted me, Eric Brown, who's been on court the last two times, I believe, suggested again, what is being agreed upon is 12 months, one year, and Cisco's nodding his head yes. So if we began Ju, I'm sorry, if we began July 1, this would run through the end of June 30.
And if we started October 1, then it would, it would match with our fiscal year?
It would, the only thing is, we suggested a number of weeks ago, when it was brought to the Veterans Land Board, that we would begin, quote-unquote, "summer" of 2021. I know that that's not a definite, you know, date, but that's what the land board approved.
Could you do, and that's what I'm trying to figure too, is, so I'm looking forward, I'm kind of worried about the fact that we're going to be always three months behind on ours, so could you do a 15-month contract within two one-year renewals, just to get it online with our fiscal year so that we're not having to do all this stuff? I would think the auditor would love that, and I mean, I'm, I mean, just because this has got to be a little...
Yes, I have my understanding that they'll propose that too, to start on October 1st fiscal year.
And that is, just so you know, that is recorded in here, that it is, it is, our fiscal year was negotiated to be their fiscal year for the purposes of the operations. So we can, we can do whatever we want to do as far as an effective date goes, but just so you know, that's already, the fiscal year is negotiated, so if we start earlier, we would have to, you know, make certain that we, I mean, they acknowledge that our fiscal year is in September, so they, we would have to apply for, it's my understanding, that 8.05 section in June, and, I'm sorry, in, yeah, to make certain that we capture the rest of it. So if we wanted to start clean and even, you would do so on our fiscal year, but there is a mechanism, again, what Tyner's saying is that they approved it because we told them and they wanted us to start in the summer, but anything is possible. We could approve as a court for any effective date, and we would go back to them. I think what's important to know is that they acknowledge our fiscal year in the contract... I think what's important to know is that they acknowledge our fiscal year in the contract as being the fiscal year, is what constitutes a fiscal year, September through September, and, um, and that it's a twelve-month duration.
I, I would just like to go back and at least revisit it, because it's the auditor's, it would sound like it was the auditor's recommendation. I can't imagine how screwy it's gonna make it for the auditor every year to try to figure this out. I mean, I just don't, and it's gonna be hard for us every year, because we're gonna be trying to figure out in advance. I, I mean, I, I, I'm happy to do a fifteen, like, a fifteen-month on this original, so that we can start July one, because I'm anxious to start, too, assuming we, you know, I've got some legal questions in the back room. But, I mean, start July one and make the first one fifteen months, and then one-year ones after that, or, or just start on October one, or whatever our fiscal year? Because that's the cleanest way that I've gotta think is gonna be for all of us. So I, I can't imagine that.
Right. I think it's whatever the parties can, I mean, we could technically approve it, subject to the auditor making that decision for us, whatever he can work with the, with the legal team. I just want you guys to know, we agree, uh, the, the, the auditor agreed that the fiscal year is, uh, acknowledged. But he had a way, I don't know, um, he explains it better, but he had an opportunity to articulate how he would do it. But, uh, we could make it subject to him, you know, creating that timeline for us.
So it could be twelve months or fifteen months?
Yeah, I would just, that's why I'm saying, Judge, is if, it sounds like the auditor's saying it would be easier if we started on the fiscal year, or we could try it this year and go fifteen months, and then one-year renewals after that that would get us to the fiscal year. I can't imagine that would be a horrible thing for the, um, GLO to, or the Veterans Board, excuse me, to go back and look at, because otherwise, I'm just concerned that this, we're gonna be behind on this for as lo- and I hope we have this forever. So I, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd let the, I'll let the, uh, the lawyer and lawyers and the auditors, uh, I think they can work that out. Whatever's the best for us, whatever works best for us, I think they would agree to, right? So.
Okay, well, then I, I won't belabor that too, Judge, I mean.
But we, we agree.
Excuse me, Judge, uh, maybe Mr. de la Cerrada will be more able to answer my question. Uh, how much overtime do you require, more or less? I know it depends on the season, but, uh, I used to work some services there at the Veteran Cemetery. And, uh, I'm just wondering, on this budget, is there allowed for overtime? Has that been included?
So I will, I will defer to the auditor on that, on that. If he's in the room, he can address the, the overtime. I will say that in a federally, um, anytime under our comprehensive disaster finance policy, if we were to be in a disaster and they were to be an employee, they would fall under our disaster finance policy regarding overtime, and that could be recouped, um, if we were to receive public assistance. Um, but J.J. just took the podium, and I see him, and maybe he can help address.
Uh, yes, that's correct, Commissioner. So in the previous contract, there was no overtime. There were salaried positions, and they would stick to that forty hours. And that's normal the case, and in case of an emergency disaster, then of course, as Judge mentioned, it would be covered by the disaster, uh, relief, so. Uh, but previously, in the previous contract, there was no overtime. They'd stick to that forty hours, and it was salaried.
Well, like I said, I worked at the funeral homes, and, uh, it's always looked, uh, real professional with how you all worked, and I was just wondering if it took a lot of overtime to keep it up?
No, sir.
Y'all done a great job.
No overtime at all.
Y'all done a great job, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And, and then just a general question?
Yes, sir.
For the auditor, so, Ade, are you telling this court and everybody here? Because what, what we all represented, I believe, and I don't want to speak for everybody, I'll get corrected if I do, and I apologize. I believe what we all, we represented was that, that, um, this was going to be something that we would take over, and that the State of Texas would pay for all associated expenses um, with this, um, with this, uh, takeover of, of the event. Or, do you believe that this budget accurately reflects that? I know there, at first, there was some back and forth, and I think that's been rectified since we started this, or not, I mean, started these meetings. So I just want to make sure, for the record that's cleared, are you saying that the auditor believes that this budget accurately reflects the fact that Texas will be paying, the State of Texas will be paying for all this? And, uh, as we s- said to the public it would, and as it was told us by the State of Texas, we would?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, that's on the record, that's what I needed. Thank you, Judge.
And, and I just wanna, uh, uh, say that it's hard for me to, to see everybody, and you're doing a great job, Connie, moving it around. But if you do have questions, just please speak up, uh, and that way I can, I can make sure that we call on everybody. Um, anybody else? Uh, J.J. is such a great resource for us.
Judge, Martin Longoria, Martin Longoria joined. Um, I don't know if you want to recognize him, but he indicated that he wanted to speak at the time of the item. I don't know if now's the right time, but that's up to the court.
Sure. Mar- Martin?
He did tell me that he was seeing veterans, so he had to kind of go, go in and out, so he may not be ready right now.
Well, and, and when I, when you do move the camera around, let, let this, let me at least acknowledge, um, that the court welcomes and is, and is grateful for all the veterans that have come here today in the courtroom to listen to this important agenda item. So thank you to those, uh, faithful, uh, veterans that are always advocating for, for veterans issues, and we certainly appreciate them. Um, is there, uh, any, if there are no other questions for J.J., I'm gonna move us to executive session, uh, to take up the item that actually we were just discussing. And, uh, but I will pause while I grab my, my notes here to read you the magic language. That gives us time to see if anybody else. Okay, therefore, I give notice at this time that Commissioner Court, Commissioners' Court will go into executive session to discuss the matters listed on the agenda uh, that are authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five-five-one in the Texas Government Code. And we do so in accordance with, um, the Government Code, uh, Sections five-five-one, oh-seven-one, oh-seven-two, three, four, seven-four-five, seven-six, eight-six, and eight-seven. And we do so to consult with our attorneys, uh, to, um, get the legal questions answered that we need. And this could, it would pertain, but not limited to, matters including litigation, real property, gifts, personal matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development negotiations, and any other matters that may be discussed, as I said, that are proper. Uh, upon completion of our executive session, the Commissioners' Court may take up, um, action in open session that we deem appropriate on items that we did discuss in executive session. For the clerk, the time is three-oh-eight, and I would ask, uh, that that be the time that I officially gavel us out, and that, uh, I'd ask the courtroom to be cleared. It helps us to deliberate in here. Please feel free to use my office as a comfort station. There's also places to sit out in the hallway. Um, and then we'll ask you to come back in once we have finished deliberating. And Connie, if you would take us off mics and, uh, again, uh, clear the courtroom at this time. Thank you so much. Glad to see everybody. Okay, um, we're gonna come back on the record, and we thank the, the clerks for waiting patiently for us. The time is four-twenty-five P.M. To our audience watching us virtually, and to those in the Commissioners' courtroom, again, thank you for your patience. Um, coming out of executive session, um, we do have one motion that will be made, and it's on item number B. And, um, I'll just, uh, ask Commissioner Chesney to articulate, uh, the will of the court.
Judge, uh, I would move that we authorize the county attorney to continue negotiations with the Veterans Board based on the legal advice given to us.
Okay, and I'll, I'll second that, uh, and, uh, is there any discussion? Okay, the only discussion I would have for our audience is that, uh, I just wanna just say thank you to the county attorney collective. When I say county attorney, I mean the whole team there. Because, uh, the document is, um, it's such an important document, and we are sort of going over it with a fine-tooth comb, and I think we've been making a lot of progress over the last two Commissioner Court meetings. And as we endeavor to try to get a, a final document, uh, we're just, um, grateful that they can continue this process for us. And I think that we are, um, as I said, grateful, and I think that it is a positive, uh, sign. So with that, any other comments or discussion?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye to instruct the county attorney to continue this process to finalize.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, pose same sign. All right, super. Okay, they will, they will get back to us then as soon as they've had time to, to visit with the other side. Uh, at this time, there are no other, uh, actions pending before the court, either in regular agenda or from executive session. So I would ask, there are any adjournments in memory? And I'll just go one by one and ask. Commissioner Hernandez, do you have any?
No, ma'am.
Do you have any, Commissioner Modas?
No, Judge.
Okay, Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Chesney?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and I don't have any either, other than to note that, um, it made me sad to see that we still have four COVID deaths this week, uh, in Neoces County. I'm sorry, yesterday, not this week, we've had more than that this week. But, um, four COVID deaths. So our condolences on behalf of Neoces County to those that have lost loved ones in the past week, and of course, the collective, um, losses that our county has seen over the last year and a half. Our thoughts and prayers are with you today and always. And again, thank you for joining us here at this Commissioners' Court meeting. We stand adjourned at four-twenty-eight P.M., four-two-eight P.M. on the record. And again, the metaphorical gavel were complete today. Thank you, Connie, and, uh, I'll go ahead and leave the session.